I don't need it tonight.
Good evening. Can you, if you have yellow cards for public comment, could you bring them to the board table, please?
Are we ready to start? You okay? Hey, good evening. I'm Paul Harrell. I'm the Vice President of the Board, and I'm filling in for Mrs. Jan Kalk, who is joining us remotely this evening. But again, thank you for attending our October 26, 2021 Board of Education meeting. Again, this meeting will be streamed on the district's YouTube channel, and a direct link will be posted on the district's website. Recorded will be available to watch at any time following the meeting. And again, thank you for attending tonight. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, following our agenda, the Board has previously met in executive session, so we will, we took roll call during that meeting, so we'll move on to item 1.04, which is extraordinary educational experiences. Dr. Clemens.
Tonight, we'll begin by honoring our students. Five members of the class of 2022 have been recognized as National Merit Commended Students. Each senior earned this recognition due to demonstrated academic excellence, and commended students represent the top 3% of test takers throughout the country. We look forward to seeing all that they accomplish in the future. As I call your name, will you come forward if you're here with us tonight? Ethan Baltimore from Staley. Gabriela Coon from Staley as well. Alex Kessinger from Staley also. Sophia Martin from North Kansas City High School. And Elise McCall from Oak Park.
Well, let us be some of the first to say congratulations, and thank you for all the hard work that's went into it. Can you tell us a little bit about what commended means to you now?
Any of you are welcome to do that.
I don't blame you. So you guys have been working extremely hard in your school, and we're so happy that you picked North Kansas City School. I know we have a couple of others that couldn't make it tonight, but I really want to say, first of all, thanks for choosing North Kansas City Schools, and second of all, thanks for the time and dedication you've put in to be a National Merit Commended Student within our school district. Did you bring anyone with you tonight that you'd like to introduce? Parents, principals, anybody like that?
Mom's here, if you want. Thank you.
There's my mother and my father. Parents and sister.
Well, again, thank you for making us so proud, and we appreciate all of your efforts, and wish you nothing but good luck in the future. So thank you for coming tonight.
We had 12 juniors who were selected to attend the Missouri Scholars Academy this past summer. The academy, which was held virtually, brings together 300 of Missouri's brightest juniors to explore new topics and connect with peers. Congratulations to these outstanding students who represent all four high schools. From North Kansas City High School, we have Tommy Kearns, Melanie Small, and Kyla Yo-Yo. If you're here, please come forward. Okay, from Oak Park High School, we have Maren Chamberlain, Ava Donigan, Devin Duncan, and Colin McCarthy. From Staley High School, we have Nicholas Bowley, Emery McClendon, Peyton Musimbi, and Jerilyn Philippi. Oh, we have one more, Dr. Clemens. From Winnetonka High School, we have Roz Ali.
What a great group of students, and we're here again to celebrate you tonight, and I bet you you brought some folks with you, but before we talk about that, Maren, would you give us a little description of Missouri Scholars?
Of course. Yes, so Missouri Scholars is a program that we've had the privilege of doing for about three weeks, or two weeks of time through Mizzou. It is just a two-week program where we were able to pick two classes that we were interested in and learn more about that topic. So personally for me, one was creativity in the classroom, and the other was how music shows history. So it was just really something that was interesting and a privilege to get to do.
What a great description. Did you, folks, bring people with you that you'd like to recognize?
I'd like to say thank you to my dad for always supporting me in everything that I do.
I brought my mom and my sisters.
My mom and my dad are here, and I think I saw Dr. McCann walk in. Hi, Dr. McCann.
I brought my mom, my dad, and my stepmom.
Brought my parents.
Brought my mom and dad in the back.
Well, again, thank you for representing us so well, and we're so proud of you and the work that you did with the Missouri Scholars Academy. So with that, our colleagues around the Board of Education would also like to congratulate you, so if I can ask you to start right here, and we'll kind of form a chain around.
Good job when you put you on the spot.
Now, we'll talk about a couple staff members. We had two teachers who were recently surprised with $500 classroom grants. Congratulations to Andy Maran from Ravenwood and Sarah Wykel at Rising Hill. Both were nominated by their school communities for going above and beyond each day. Thank you to Harvest Bank also for honoring these two outstanding educators through their We Love Teachers campaign. Andy and Sarah, if you're here with us tonight, come on down.
Fantastic, and congratulations. What are you gonna spend your $500 on?
I don't know. A big pizza party, I think.
That sounds fantastic. Let me know what day that is.
I think the students have already earmarked it for something.
The students have earmarked it. Well, thank you for the amazing job you do with our young people, and do you have anybody here tonight you want to celebrate?
Yeah, I have my wife, Sarah, and then my son Ben and Rose are watching at home on YouTube.
And my husband Chris, my son Kayen, and my principal Kate Place.
Fantastic.
Yes, thank you for your work on behalf of the staff, and we really appreciate that, and with that, our colleagues around the board would like to congratulate you.
Lastly, North Kansas City Schools was named to the 100 Healthiest Workplaces in America list. With a clear focus on mental health and well-being, North Kansas City Schools is one of the 100 healthiest workplaces in all of America. Throughout the past year, our wellness team has provided a wealth of resources and support for employees and their families to set healthy goals, connect meaningfully with others, manage stress, and share kindness. The winners of this award understand the value of their people and highlight the importance of employee well-being. Congratulations.
Matt, do you want to share anything with us? I know you head up the Wellness Department.
Yeah, sure. I'd just like to say thank you. We have a great group of people that serve as wellness champions in every single one of our buildings that help us create this great wellness culture, and we also have our folks with Misty Miller and Amber Paxton that really have helped us build this over the past few years, so.
Congratulations, and also, I'm sure that Dr. Gaddy heard this, but again, with North Kansas City Schools being one of the 100 healthiest workplaces in all of America, that's certainly something to celebrate and something to help recruit new staff with. So thank you for all of your work. Well, we certainly appreciate everybody coming tonight, but actually, this is a perfect segment into our agenda. If anybody is here tonight that came for the extraordinary educational experiences and maybe does not want to stay for the rest of the agenda, you're free to leave at this point in time. Well, thank you for the rest of you for staying. We appreciate that. Again, it's time for item 1.05 for visitors' comments. And at each regular business meeting, an opportunity is provided for visitors to address board members regarding any subject concerning education. Patrons are asked to contact the Board Secretary with a request to speak prior to the meeting or to fill out one of the yellow cards located inside the doors upon entering the boardroom. Each individual is allowed three minutes with a total of 30 minutes allocated at this meeting. While your comments will be heard, board members will not respond at this time. We do, however, follow up in a timely manner regarding questions or concerns. Because this is an open meeting, speakers are asked to refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. And tonight, I believe we have four individuals who have asked to address the Board of Education, and the first one I have is Mr. James Richmond.
Thank you for your time. My name is James Richmond. I am the president of the Northland Parent Association, which I'm sure you all are familiar with. Would you like me to start over? My name is James Richmond. I am the president of the Northland Parent Association, which I know you guys are familiar with. But in case you all don't know, come see me afterwards. I'll let you know. I'm here to talk about curriculum tonight. These are discussions that we have had previously, have had specifically with two of your board members. Or, I'm sorry, one of the board members and a superintendent. And I'm shocked and absolutely aggravated at what is in our school systems, what's in our school library, and what is available to these students. This book here called Fun Home is a graphic novel. Normally, when you think of a graphic novel, you think of a comic book. But that is not the case here. This graphic novel actually has this material in it. If I was to hand this material out to a minor, or read or give any of these books to a minor, I would be charged with solicitation of a minor. So my first question to you guys is, why is that any different for you? These books, and this is Fun Home, what you see here deals with a breakdown of a family and female with female sex with detailed descriptions and pictures of oral sex with her girlfriend. Lawn Boy by Jonathan Evison. And I quote, this is what's in the book, "What if I told you I touched another guy's dick? I said, 'What if I told you I sucked it?' I was 10 years old, but it's true. I put Doug Goble's dick in my mouth. I was in fourth grade. It was no big deal because he sucked mine too." Why are we giving this and allowing this to our kids? They're minors. If you want this discussed, it should be something that should be discussed at home. Out of Darkness by Ashley Hope Perez. It is labeled as a historical fiction by our North Kansas City School District Libraries. And I quote, "The first night Henry and her stepfather came into her room, she lay as still as she could. Henry closed the door and locked it behind him. Henry came to the side of her bed and pulled back the covers and grabbed her hand. 'Come on over here.'" As he pulled her to her feet, he then shifted his pajamas, and the part of him that made him a man stuck out, reddish-purple and frightening. He lifted her hand to his mouth and licked it. Then he lowered her hand down and closed it around the hardness. His hand moved hers. She watched her hand move back and forth as if it was not hers. A moment later, the thing leaped, and a hot mess lay across her palm and between her fingers. Henry walked to the bathroom and guided her hand to the sink as he rinsed her hand. 'All better,' he said. That is an adult with a minor. Incest. Yes?
I was just gonna say, your three minutes are up, but thank you.
I'm almost done. I'm almost done. All Boys Aren't Blue, the last book we've got here tonight, this book is an autobiography detailing the author's journey through life as a gay black man. I don't even need to read it because it's basically the same crap that was in the rest of the books. We also have a list of 28 other books that we're looking through the school systems to find. Why are you guys promoting this stuff? Why are you allowing it in our school? These deal with LGBTQ sexual explicit scenarios with minors, teaching minors, allowing them to read it. It deals with incest, pedophilia. That is called grooming. That is something that you guys are pushing in our schools. I want to know why.
Mr. Richmond, again, thank you for coming. We've been respecting our timeframe. Our second visitor's comment this evening is Dr. Dana Granberg. And again, if you could limit yours to three minutes, we'd appreciate that.
I think I'm under. Good evening to the board. My name is Dr. Dana Granberg Neal, and I've been a practicing family physician, board certified for the last 20 years. In recent years, our society has placed a great emphasis on the importance of diversity. Diversity in beliefs and culture and thoughts and ideas. And simultaneously, we have also seen a renewed emphasis on science, technology, engineering, and math in our schools. However, I feel that we are failing to practice diversity of thought and consideration of ideas after examination of data linked to COVID-19. Certain data and experts are highlighted and propagated while others are silenced and censored. In advocating my medical views backed by science and expert opinion and my own clinical experience, I was reported to the Missouri Board of Healing Arts by an individual that disagreed with my opinion expressed in an open forum such as this. Other parents here have also faced backlash for voicing their concerns. Far from being domestic terrorists, we are trying to advocate for our children using information, studies, expert opinion, and examples from our community. Adults across this country are losing their jobs due to workplace vaccine mandates. Will our schools be next to require COVID shots for our students? I'm concerned that the school policies already implemented, combined with the continued push to vaccinate or inject children now as young as two to five years of age and older, will lead parents to believe that they have no other option. All of this despite the fact that healthy children have a statistically near-zero mortality risk with COVID-19 infection, and we have no long-term safety data for these injections, and a very questionable risk-to-benefit ratio of these injections. When policies are implemented that have unequal treatment based on vaccination status, such as quarantining after exposure, how are these policies not influencing parents, students, and staff decision-making? It is not selfish for parents or patients to decline an injection that the CDC itself acknowledges does not prevent breakthrough cases or transmission of COVID-19 or its variants. If the safety and effectiveness of these injections were otherwise, I would not stand here before you tonight. Health boards and school boards should give pause to creating and enforcing health policies that could have long-term implications on the health of our students and the staff. Thank you so much for listening and keeping this an open forum. Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the board. Going to apologize on this next card. I'm going to call up Ms. Kraft. We couldn't make out the first name on this, but if you'll come up and introduce yourself, we'd appreciate that.
Christine.
Christine, okay.
Can you speak now?
Yes.
I stand before you today as an American patriot, professional nurse practitioner, and most importantly, as a mother. And today, it's hard for me to believe that I have to stand up here and discuss what the material is being utilized within our school system. That this child pornography is even published and allowed in our schools for our children to read just angers me. Children cannot comprehend child pornography because they are just that, children. And there are laws in place that prevent such. I am fully aware that because of profession, I am mandated reporter. And such concerns, when they are elevated related to child pornography, I'm to mandate. I know for a fact in the state of Missouri, the school system is also required to mandate reporters for the same concerns. It's oddly interesting how I get the police called on me while participating as a parent at a school board meeting because I'm not wearing a mask appropriately, which makes me ask the question, how can I not call the authorities on this school and the people involved in purchasing and promoting, even allowing, child pornography within our schools? I am sure you have removed many of the old classics off the shelves because the writing that is no longer seen as appropriate, but you are refilling the shelves with disgusting child pornography. The dilemma, we feel, is how can you not be compared to a sexual trafficking predator who manipulates grooms, brainwashes, and then abuses our children with child pornography to force them to become comfortable with the uncomfortable? Pure evil in the child pornography that it is. That is the whole premises behind child sex trafficking. Just ask the authorities who are asked and tasked to chasing down those criminals. But will you make that odd claim that we are circumventing a democratic review process? Just as others before you called the angry parents who should partner in with the school, but these books anger us, and the liberals say we are angry because we are driven by other widely circulated videos of angry parents speaking out about municipal meetings. As a speaker for others in the gathering and the others that could not attend, we are saying you have a duty to defend the U.S. Constitution as an American for the vulnerable, and the vulnerable is our children. Your children are my children. Whether you understand or not, I am speaking to protect your children as well as mine against any entity having possession or providing child pornography to any of these kids. May God have mercy on us, sinners one and all, for having to even discuss such material being printed, disseminated, purchased by our tax dollars, and provided to the innocent children to destroy their innocence in the blood of sex. Thank you.
And our last presenter tonight is Amber Ryder. And our last presenter tonight is Amber Ryder.
Okay, so I was here last time in August after you guys issued the mask mandates again for the schools. I haven't heard you guys vote on that again, and I only bring that up because our attorney general brought a lawsuit to the school boards because they've voted on re-issuing the masks, and they still have not given us an end date on them, and you can't legally do that. They end within 30 days if you don't reissue them or vote on them. Last time here, I spoke about mask mandates and how useless they are. Even Children's Mercy has a graphic that compares masks to layers of Swiss cheese, which displays my point perfectly. Also, just like Swiss cheese, the masks harbor mold and dangerous pathogens for our children to breathe in, but you guys already know that, and you ignored it, and your silence is deafening. Data shows that around 16% of COVID cases recorded nationwide have involved children 17 years and younger, yet children only make up about .08% of total deaths of the total cases. When the mandate came back into effect again in August, several parents spoke about the right to choose what's best for their child. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC, over 6 million children have tested positive for COVID with 587 reported deaths. That was as of last week. For children under 18, the death rate is .00009%. But you already know that, and your silence about it is deafening. And your silence about knowing that the masks don't work, which was what I was told whenever I had my objections and I walked into this building and had a meeting with the assistant superintendent, I was told that you guys already understand that the masks really aren't effective. It's about keeping a butt in a seat. My kid is more than just a butt in a seat. She's not just a piece of meat that helps make you money. Last year, and to prove my point about the mask ineffectiveness, last year, I didn't take care of a single flu patient, and I'm a critical care nurse. The flu was practically nonexistent, and people say, "Well, that's because people wore masks." But COVID raged on, and people say, "That's because people weren't wearing masks." But you and I both know that that can't possibly be true at the same time. But you already know that, and still you're silent. According to the NKC's website, your guys' school website, the children were five times more likely to be exposed to COVID, and they still carried the same infection rate as the community, but the teachers, who had five times less chance being exposed to COVID, they carried two and a half times the community rate. They were at 26%.
Amber, wrap it up.
Sure. My final point is the school board should not be allowed to prescribe a health treatment such as masks. I reject your method of preventative treatment. In other words, you do not have my informed consent, and you guys will not ever have my informed consent if you choose to try to mandate vaccines for our children. And I can't even sue the manufacturer if something were to come and harm her from that.
Thank you very much. [applause] Do you have it?
Who would I give it to? There's also the first right under the Missouri bill of rights of our constitution that says you can get your power from us, and we also pay your salaries.
To move on to our agenda tonight, quite a few items that we'd like to... And with that, we've got the agenda before us. Could I ask for an approval of the agendas tonight under 2.01?
I move approval of the agendas presented.
Dr. Ward?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone. Can we take a vote on that, please? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Section number three for the consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Dr. Ward, thank you.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gleason Miller. Do we have a treasures report?
We do. Summary, the fiscal year-to-date operating receipts totaled about $12,900,031 and $31,750,000 about, respectively. This accounts for about a 6.8% increase over the previous year. Monthly operating expenditures totaled about $22,600. That's also a 6.6% increase. Operating expenditures are down about .6%, and we're slightly behind the prior year. We should say that all of these numbers are different to the prior year based on, obviously, going through the pandemic, which has changed the budgets dramatically over the last year. Good news is, the net general revenue collections in the state of Missouri increased 16.3% from $944 million to $1.1 billion, so that's kind of nice. But the final, the final thought is, and we are on target and doing okay with our budget so far. If you have any questions?
Thank you again. Is there any questions for Mr. Stone or Mr. Matt Fritz on the treasures report? Without any questions on the treasures report, you've got the full consent agenda before you. Are there any questions on any other items within the consent agenda? Dr. Ward, are you?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
No, I take that back. It's in the regular agenda.
Okay. I have not seen any additional questions on the consent agenda. We've had a motion. We've had a second. Now, could we take a vote on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. We're now ready for section five, which would be new business. And 5.01 is the 2022 legislative agenda. And I believe, Dr. Clemens, you're going to have Mrs. Tammy Henderson come to the podium.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mrs. Henderson.
Good evening. Just wanted to present to you tonight the 2022 legislative agenda. If you remember, it's been the board's custom to nominate or to submit three members of the board that work with me on developing this agenda every year. This year, it was Mrs. Kalk, Mr. Stone, and Mrs. Gleason Miller. Hang on one second. There we go. Before you are our suggested legislative priorities for this year, I hate to read straight from the page, but I am going to just quickly. You'll see we made some changes this year. We support appropriations for full funding of the state education foundation formula and for full funding of the state education transportation formula. We support expanded statewide funding for pre-K education. We support raising the bonding capacity ceiling from 15% of a school district's assessed valuation to 20%. We support decision-making by locally elected school boards. We oppose the expansion of charter schools in the state of Missouri. We oppose diverting federal or state funds from public schools by any means, including withholdings, tuition tax credits, scholarship tax credits, vouchers, and economic development incentives on more than 50% for projects that do not have the local school district approval. And we oppose any legislation that erodes the authority of locally elected officials and undermines the voice of local voters. I wanted to mention to you as well that we have been working with several civic groups such as the Kansas City Consensus Agenda, which is a product of the Kansas City Economic Development Corporation, the Greater Kansas City Chamber, and a whole lot of other economic groups, the Northland Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Kansas City Chamber of Commerce. And what we've worked with them this year is to really try to use, work with those groups to show our lawmakers that we do have support for public K-12 education in our communities. What we, what we are saying is, we support accountable public school education systems and area school boards and their right to local control. We oppose efforts to divert state or federal funds meant for public schools. We recognize the strong link between quality public education and a diverse and world-class workforce. So you will see that show up in several of the agendas for some of our community partners. So what I'm hoping that you all will do tonight is to approve this legislative agenda. And with that, Mr. Vice President, I will return it to you for any questions.
Certainly. Thank you, Mrs. Henderson. First of all, is there any members of the committee that would like to make any comments? Or any additional board members? Mr. Stone, just... Yes, Mrs. Kalk?
Yes, I would just like to thank Ms. Henderson for her work last year, as well as the advocacy and the connections she makes throughout the state. Also, I think it's really been vital that our Kansas City schools remain the leader in bringing voice to some of these initiatives, and appreciate our legislators as they've listened and understood and embraced our school district.
Thank you, Mrs. Kalk. Is there any other board members who have any comments or questions specifically on legislative agenda? If not, could we get a motion to approve the North Kansas City Schools 2022 legislative agenda?
I move we approve the legislative agenda as presented.
I second. Chair?
Okay, I think I had Mr. Stone and Mrs. Kalk as the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Mrs. Henderson, thank you very much for your work on this effort.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Moving on with our agenda this evening, we've got item 5.02, Martin Brothers Distributing Services Agreement for Warehouse Grocery Bid. That's a lot to say, Dr. Evans.
You can go ahead and pull that presentation up, Corey. Yes, this evening, we'll be asking the board of education to consider our contract for our food distribution and supply. As you know, it's been quite a journey to get here. I remember specifically going into Dr. Clemens' office and saying our second and final provider was going to drop us or informed us that they wouldn't be able to. And he was immediately on the phone with the governor. I asked Tammy to, to speak with our representatives. Everyone was very supportive. Solutions were hard to come by. This wasn't a local, a North Kansas City issue. This was a state and, and really a federal issue, as, as many states have gone through this. So what we'll be seeing today, I wish Jenna was here. Jenna Knuth, our Food Services Director, couldn't be here with us tonight. I wish she was because she was out in front of this work, trying to get something for our students and our staff to be able to provide. And I kind of wanted to show you this video. So Corey, if you could go to this, the second...
Yep. Whoop. Sorry. I think I did that, Corey, sorry. But this is Jenna in one of her presentations in a, in a news feature.
Doesn't seem like we're going to get sound here this evening. So basically, what Jenna said in that presentation is, we, we are not able to get food, and we knew, found out, and really, as we did the process initially, because U.S. Foods contacted us and said, "We will not even be bidding your, your work." And we knew that that was going, that was an issue, but we felt okay because we still had Kohl's and we still had Cisco. Well, later on in the, in the summer, Cisco dropped us, and then finally, Kohl's dropped us as well. At that point, behind the scenes, Jenna was already working with local, smaller vendors to try to supplement what we couldn't find. And then on her and her staff, we worked with Martin Brothers to start supplementing food, major food deliveries. And at that point, Martin Brothers was able to, they were already local because they were in Kansas City, Missouri, and they, and they started working with that community and that district. Oh! There you go. Let's listen to Jenna. She explains it much better.
Food shortages are plaguing many school districts across Kansas and Missouri.
Yeah, districts say food supply and delivery issues are in play. Fox Four's Monica Castro spoke with the North Kansas City School District about the measures it's taking to make sure students get a meal.
I talked to a North Kansas City School District official who tell me they fear that they'll run out of food after they lost two of its food distributors. So students put these substitutions on the menu.
So we have had a couple of distributors get out of the K-12 market. So U.S. Foods got out back in March. They didn't bid on our products. Cisco did bid on our products, but they got out the week before school started.
That means North Kansas City Schools is facing a food crisis.
What we're really concerned about is less of the many substitutions. We're really concerned about will we completely run out and don't have something to offer them.
That's why Jenna Knuth, the district's Food and Nutrition Services Director, says they are always looking for other avenues to get items.
So we're even going out to a vending machine company here locally and asking them to bring food in for us.
Parents like Danielle Craig said she'll be packing her child's lunch from now on.
Once I see an hour, I think I definitely need to start eating from home. I don't wait. There are six meals to eat.
Knuth said if this problem persists, she hopes lawmakers can step in.
I would really like the either local state governments or the federal government to step in and incentivize these distributors to provide food to the K-12 market.
Monica Castro, Fox Four, working for you.
A whole number of districts are having to make some changes.
So with that, we knew that Cisco and U.S. Foods... So ironically, after that video was taken, then we lost Kohl's. So her nerves, her nerves were actually a lot worse after that video because Kohl's dropped us. But like I said, her and her team were with Martin Brothers. They were able to secure and work the contract, worked with Steve Book and their legal team. And here tonight, Martin Brothers has worked with us to get a contract for you to consider. You can, you know the products there with the frozen refriger... You know, it's a, it's a full-service primary vendor, and we're in really good shape. So with that, I will give it back to Mr. Harold for any questions the board may have.
Well, Dr. Evans, thank you very much for your presentation, and again, a, a big thank you for bringing some stability to the program. I'll ask my board colleagues if they have any comments or questions for you. Dr. Ward?
Just two quick comments. First of all, congratulations. Thank you for your diligence. I mean, it's, we've been providing meals for students throughout COVID, and once we come back into school, we run into this kind of a problem. It's kind of shocking and amazing, but it is what it is, so... But I commend your team, Jenna, and everybody else. For those who don't know it, this is a food vendor out of Iowa, and not, no one in the Kansas City market was willing to serve the education community. And so we, Jenna, found somebody in Iowa who was willing to service us. And so, my commendations.
Thank you, Dr. Ward, and, and I know that they are servicing Kansas City, Missouri, and the Hickman Mill School District as well. So we were able to, they were able to pick up a few other districts.
Any additional comments by board members or questions? Yes?
I just want to say, I just want to say that I just very much appreciate, again, the leadership that we're showing, that this district is showing, and that our leadership in the district is showing. This has been an issue that's top of mind for the schools, for parents, for the community as a whole. It's been a conversation that I've heard across the board. And the fact that we made this happen and that we just didn't take no for an answer is very much appreciated by parents in the community, and thank you very much.
Thank you. We have an administrative recommendation, which is to award the Martin Brothers the grocery contract for the remainder of the 2021-22 school year and for the entire 2022-23 school year, with the option to renew the contract up for three additional one-year terms. Do I have a member of the Board of Education who would like to make that motion?
I move we approve the recommendation as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Ward, for seconding that. This requires a full vote of the board. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Evans. Thank you very much. Okay, following our agenda this evening, where it's time for the Board Superintendent Reports and Discussion, we'll start with 6.01 with the COVID update. And I believe Dr. Perry Helvitz is up.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I will begin with case rates. On September 28th, I reported our seven-day case rate at 84. On October 10th, the seven-day case rate had dropped to 46. Our current seven-day case rate is at 29. This trend is in a much steeper decline than the overall drop in case numbers in the metro area, as reported by, excuse me, the Mid-American Regional Council. According to the Mark Data Hub, reported case rates are down by 15% in the metro area and 7% in Clay County compared to the seven previous days. The Kansas City region has seen a decrease in average daily new hospitalizations to 89, a 7.6% drop from the previous week. Essentially, the school case rates are lower than the community case rates due to our commitment to masking and our other mitigation measures. Now on to vaccinations. We are currently working with both Clay County Public Health Department and Children's Mercy Hospital regarding the availability of vaccinations for those ages 5 through 12. As you may have seen on the news today, an emergency youth authorization for the Pfizer vaccine was approved. Currently, vaccinations are readily available to all of our teachers and students 12 years old and up. Additionally, booster vaccines are also readily available for those district staff who received Pfizer, Moderna, and the J&amp;J vaccine. Lastly, we are working with Clay County Public Health regarding the development of a test-to-stay plan. Once approved, this will allow those who are currently sent home as close contacts to stay in school if they pass a regimen of tests provided by the school district. I am open to any questions now for the board or from you, Mr. Vice President.
Mrs. Reinhardt?
All right. Thank you again for your diligence with all of this that we've gone through. Could you explain a little bit more about the test-to-stay plan? I mean, I understand conceptually, but the nuts and bolts of how that's going to happen?
Yeah, test-to-stay is, was presented by the Department of Health and Senior Services and Department of Voluntary and Secondary Education a little while back. And essentially, what it said is, is that if you are a close contact, if you are without a mask for more than 15 minutes, so most of those kids would be kids at lunch, or kids in practices, or kids in plays, or times where they weren't wearing a mask, and they were identified as a close contact, and they showed no symptoms, that through a series of three tests, one initial, and then two follow-up, and they're antigen tests, they are very non-invasive, it's just a swab at the base of the nose. It takes less than 10 minutes for it to become finalized. If they are negative in those three tests, they can continue to come to school and don't have to stay home. You're welcome.
Any additional questions or comments for Dr. Helvitz?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Moving through our agenda, 6.02, North Kansas City Schools' participation at the Missouri School Boards Association's Conference, which is being held in Kansas City, Missouri on November 4th through the 7th. And we have Dr. Rochelle Daniels with us tonight to discuss that.
Thank you. Dr. Clemens asked that I share just a little bit about what's going to be happening here next week in Kansas City with the Missouri School Boards Association Conference. Corey, I believe you have a presentation on this? No, we'll go with it then. All right, cool. So, North Kansas City Schools has four different opportunities to share points of pride, and they will begin with a pre-conference tour. So next week on November 4th, we have given the option for participants to sign up and go to North Kansas City High School, and then also the Early Education Center. As part of that, they will get to eat lunch with Culinary Creations, our own catering system here. And then the kids in Pro Start at North Kansas City High School will prepare dessert for people as well. Will then travel to see the pathways in action. Student ambassadors will help lead those tours. Then we'll get back on the bus and head over to the Early Education Center. And at that point, we will tour the facility as we've done before, and then Dr. Ward will give the presentation that he's given to some of our patrons, explaining the process of development for the Early Education Center. We'll put everybody back on the bus, we'll take them back to the downtown Marriott. So right now, we are recruiting participants for that. And Susan Highland put together a very, a beautiful video that really tied it all together. We're trying to show Portrait of a Graduate Competencies, pre-K through 12, through the tour. And so if you haven't had a chance to check that out, we've promoted it. It's also in your Friday update from last Friday. Then in addition to that pre-conference tour, the other three opportunities we have involve sessions on Friday and Saturday. One of our sessions will be all about the Portrait of a Graduate Competencies and Pathways. That one will be Dr. Sutton, Dr. Moss, and Shannon Shelton. Then we have a presentation on the use of children's services funds to successfully implement behavior intervention processes. That one, we'll hear from Dr. Helvitz and Janelle Porter. And then the last presentation will be all about the Early Education Center, and then the expansion of pre-K learning altogether. Dr. Ward will lead that presentation. So again, we look forward to the opportunity to host people from around the state, but more importantly, to shed a light on some of the fantastic things we have going on here in North Kansas City Schools. At this time, I'd ask that the board give me any questions you may have about the conference. Mr. Harrell, back to you.
Again, thank you, Dr. Daniels. Again, all of our board members have had opportunities to sign up to be, to participate in those sessions. I know that Mrs. Cole, our Board Secretary, has sent information out in the past, and will probably have it again this Friday, about the times of the sessions and who has signed up to represent our board at that point in time. I don't have any additional questions to you, but I'll ask our board colleagues if they have any questions about the conference. Not hearing any questions, but I do want to share my excitement, at least to my knowledge. This is the first time that Kansas City, Missouri has hosted the MSBA Conference in quite some time. I think it has been here at some point in time, but not in recent years, let's put it that way. So again, it's a wonderful opportunity to show off our city, our school district, to our school colleagues around the state. So thank you for your work in helping us shine. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving through the agenda, we have 6.03, the Prospect Plaza Presentation, and I believe we have Dr. Evans and Mr. Vandal.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell. And tonight, for our presentation with Prospect Plaza, we have members of the DLR Group, Robin O'Rourke and Stacy Davis are here, and they will walk us through the next, I guess, we'll call it Phase Two of the Prospect Plaza Project, which will include some IT space as well, as well as some professional development and some flexible spacing. But I'll let them and Jeff do all the great work here. DLR Group has been an amazing partner. They are obviously the EEC group and are also working with us on Briar Cliff. So with that being said, Robin, why don't you take it away?
Again, I'm Robin O'Rourke with DLR Group. I've been working with Ian, I think you all know Ian, he comes and presents quite a bit, and Stacy, on this next round of Prospect Plaza. We have just wrapped up our schematic design phase and, let's see, can you?
It's one of those two. Go ahead and flip to the next one.
Just wrapped up our schematic design phase, and we're heading into design development. We are working with our friends at McCown Gordon to keep this project in budget. So this is Prospect Plaza, as you once know it, you probably recognize that. It's changed quite a bit since the Early Education Center has come online. So if you want to go to the next slide. We have prepared a video. So this is just kind of our design, what we think this next phase can look like. What we intend to do is make sure that we carry on that design aesthetic that we started with the Early Education Center. So using some of the same paint, complementary colors, same materials, but just making it look a little bit more professional, obviously, for the IT and the Educator Innovation Center. It's kind of a mouthful there. So sorry, this video is a little bit slow, but you can see, using some of the same paint colors and metal panel. We want to take down the existing structure that's in the middle there, that tower, and create a courtyard. So this would be adjacent to perhaps a coffee shop. And then that mural that you see there, we thought would be a great idea to get your, some of your high school art students involved, perhaps have a competition between some of the high schools and enlist them to help us with that mural. Next, next slide. So there you can see those two, the District IT and Educator Innovation Center. Those are the two areas that we'll be talking about tonight. And then I wanted to point out around the back, we want to keep those existing overhead doors and the docks and the exits that we already have within those buildings, make sure that we can utilize those as we move forward with the design. So that's the exterior. I'm going to let Stacy talk about all the really fun things that we've got planned for the inside.
Hello, thank you for having us today. Like Dr. Evans said, I've had the pleasure of being part of the design teams for the Early Education Center and Barrow Cliff Elementary, and excited to get to share the fun stuff for Prospect Plaza with you today as well. I think this is somehow my first board meeting that I've been to. But if you see me shaking, it's not because I'm nervous, it's because all those warm bodies left, and now it's freezing in here. So if I'm like trembling up here, I'm not scared of you, I think you're all very nice people. I'm just really cold. So for the Educator Innovation Center, we kind of amped up what was originally supposed to be just kind of a professional development space, where you all could have district gatherings when you have, you know, large groups of people, 150, 200 people. And we really wanted to kind of think beyond that and think, you know, what could really be a resource for the district? Not only the educators, but the students, the community. And so the design concept that Ian and I came up with after a little bit of kind of bouncing ideas around, a little bit of wordplay, we really kind of latched onto this idea of the North Star. You're the North Kansas City School District, and we had talked a lot with Jeff and Dr. Evans and the rest of the team with, about the idea of just this being really a, you know, a hub for the district. And so the concept of the North Star kind of hits all of the main vision points that we would see for this Educator Innovation Center. So leadership, thinking about the North Star as a guide, the star as being kind of the center of a solar system, and that kind of ties into the idea of this being really a hub or like a nucleus for the district. Innovation, so thinking about stars and how they have lots of energy, or thinking about creation, exploring the idea of stars giving birth to other stars. So it's really just a place where there's constantly, you know, new life being generated, new ideas being generated. And then community. One of the things that we really love about your district is how involved and engaged everyone in the community is. It's not just like, oh, we're just going to send our kids off to school and we'll take them back when they're 18. All the, all the community members really are invested in your students and your educators. And so, you know, the idea of a star being a, kind of a homecoming point of something that connects everything else. So on that note, we kind of thought of this main gathering space, which is kind of the big orb-shaped space in the middle as being basically that center point that all the other functions in the Educator Innovation Center revolve around. On the left-hand side, we're showing a couple of classrooms, or what we're calling learning labs. One that's really going to be geared towards technology, so a place to, you know, experiment with new technologies as they're coming out, a place for educators to get trained on using new technologies that might be coming into their classrooms. And then the one in the top left would be a furniture learning lab. So as many of you know, there's constantly new furniture pieces that are coming out, and it would be a place where we could potentially partner with local furniture vendors to bring in different pieces as they kind of come onto the market, experiment with them before you, you know, before Jeff goes off and, you know, buys 20,000 of them, or let's, let's bring them in and let the educators and the students come in and see what, see what they're about, see if it's something that we like. And then the main space obviously would be used for those gatherings that you have several times a year, where you have 150, 200 people. But when it's not being used for those activities, you know, right now, we're kind of showing it with that dining, you know, banquet-style layout. But when it's not being used for those, we really see it as being a space that could be utilized every day for a variety of purposes. So both educators and the students, it could be a great spot to do, you know, an art display. So if you have, you know, an art fair that you want all of your students to bring pieces to, or if you have a robotics competition or things like that. So there's really a lot of different ways that that space could be utilized. The yellow kind of in the top right up there would be your kitchen space. So could be used a lot on a day-to-day basis, but then it has easy access to the exterior for some of those large events. So when a caterer brings their truck up, they can pull it right up to the side and bring everything in, get it all set up, and that's where everyone kind of circle through and get their food before an event. The orange on the right there is a proposed kind of audiovisual studio, so a place where videos for the district could be made, you could have students come in, and if they're doing podcasts, there would be a little podcast studio, or if a student wanted to come in as part of a project and record a podcast. Lots of different ways that we envision that space being leveraged to create, you know, district materials, videos, things like that. And then the kind of white shelled-out space there is future work, hoping maybe eventually to get a fitness center in there. So we talked a little bit earlier about how North Kansas City Schools is one of the 100 healthiest workplaces, and trying to support that educator wellness, because educators who are not supported in their health and wellness can't do their best work for students. And then the bottom right component is the coffee shop that Robin mentioned. So in the yellow there, that would be a student-run coffee shop open to the public. It would be secured off from the rest of the Educator Innovation Center. So you'd need keycard access to kind of get back into that, that district side of it. But we're really excited about some potential there to kind of brand it and, you know, maybe make some nods to the four-feeder patterns, maybe there's a different coffee blend for each of the high schools, all of that kind of thing. So a lot of parts and pieces that we're, that we're trying to squeeze in here, but we're excited about where it's going and just all the different resources that it could provide to the educators and to the students and community as well. So here's kind of a more of a 3D view of it. So there'd be a nice big welcome center space at the front of the building. We're going to try and utilize as much glass as we can to kind of get daylight back. We're planning to cut a skylight over the kitchen to get some more daylight into that kind of back corner, and then the coffee shop down at the bottom there with support spaces behind. And then we have just a quick video. And the design's, you know, still a little bit in flex. Like Robin said, we're kind of working through design development. But this is that main space where those large gatherings would take place. We'll have kind of different, different technologies installed at various points. The shape of it's a little bit unique, so we want to make sure if something's on a screen, that everybody, everybody has a screen where they can see what's going on. We're hoping to do some interesting acoustical treatments on that ceiling there, keep the noise down. There's that skylight over the kitchen. There's that skylight over the kitchen. So all these kind of spaces adjacent to the orb are really just collaboration, open collaboration. We're going to utilize a lot of really cool furniture pieces. So these are spaces where educators could come during the day to have meetings, any kind of teacher planning days, this would be a great space to utilize if they don't want to be in their classrooms, just want to change the scenery. It could be a place that students come after school to study, you could do ACT prep, you could do so many different things with that space. And this kind of moves on to the coffee shop side. We're showing those four little booths on the left-hand side there, and we're thinking that each one will kind of be branded for one of the high schools. So some subtle nods to those four-feeder patterns and we're excited about what the space will start to look like as we move forward. And then we've done some what we call dot polling, where we've kind of provided some imagery to some of our team and asked them to kind of respond to images that they like or that they feel like kind of brings the vibe across. So thinking about something that's, you know, pretty clean, pretty modern, but has just a lot of warmth to it, like we were talking about, you know, a homecoming and just a sense of community. We want it to feel warm, we want it to feel welcoming, a lot of kind of natural materials, things like that. So that's kind of where the interior, you know, finished palette and color choices will all kind of start to stem from those images. For the district's IT headquarters, which will be right next door in between the Early Childhood Center and the Educator Innovation Center, the design concept is a circuit or a circuit board. And I know nothing about computers, but I did a little research as we were getting into this and I've talked to Keith a lot and he's taught me many things about technology that I didn't know. But the thing about a circuit or a circuit board is that's one of the most crucial components of a computer. It's how a computer functions, it can't function without it, it connects everything and just makes it all function. And that's essentially what your, you know, IT department does. Not only the technology is crucial for your students and educators to do what they need to do, but the people who work there. I know personally, I can't go hardly a day without having to contact my IT people at our office to get them to help me with something with my computer. So it's serving all the educators, it's serving all of the learners, everyone's kind of connected by this technology. And, you know, we really want them to be able to help, you know, push innovation in the classroom and beyond with the technology that they're providing for you all. So we recently have had the chance to go into the building and start to take some measurements and, you know, field verify a lot of things that we weren't able to do right off the bat. So some of this stuff is shifting around a little bit as we realize the building is slightly different proportion than we originally thought. But the orange part at the bottom there is what we're calling the Genius Bar. So that would be a public, essentially public space where a student or an educator could bring in their device, they can sit and wait in some of the lounge seating areas while their device gets worked on. There's some toilets that are accessible so if they're having to wait for a while or, you know, if an educator has picked up their toddler at the Early Education Center and has come next door to have their laptop worked on, they have somewhere to use the restroom. And then all of this space back behind that orange area is secure, private. We'll have some glass through to start to bring some daylight back into the building, but it'll all be a secure district area. The pink, the big pink area in the middle is kind of open office desking for developers, engineers, a large percentage of the staff. And then the pink over on the right is the help desk work area. So they, those folks are on the phone 24/7, so they really communicated to us that they need a lot more acoustical privacy, so they have kind of more of a self-contained space so that they can be on the phone and be able to hear what they're doing. It'll include a training room, kitchen, kind of cafe area, couple of private offices, a conference room, some small group phone rooms, and then all the gray in the back is storage. So they'll be storing all of those 25,000 district devices, all the kind of warehouse storage things, a lot of functions that are currently kind of scattered in different buildings and locations throughout the district is all going to kind of be brought here. There'll be some secure parking in the back for some vehicle, district vehicles, and then there's a loading dock on the back as well. So it'll really streamline things. And during those times of year when you're doing the device check-in and checkout and you've got all those thousands of students and educators coming in to get their laptops for the year and check them out, that's kind of why the space at the front is long and skinny is so we kind of can develop some queuing through that space. And our thought is that if we need to kind of spill out, if we realize, you know, that we get in there and there's not actually enough, that they would just during those times be able to open the doors and kind of spill out into that corridor behind it. And so we can start to make some nice long loops so people aren't queuing outside, which I know has been an issue in the past. Keith was walking me through the nick and showing me how, well, you know, this is where the line went, and then it wasn't long enough so everyone was standing outside. So we don't want people to have to do that. And then we've had some conversations with Keith as well and his team about projected growth. And so we've really tried to ensure that as the district grows and as the district IT team grows, that there's room to add additional workstations and things like that where all you're doing is you're swapping out the furniture. You're not having to come back in and blow out walls or renovate or add new power and data, it's all already there and it would just be a matter of kind of removing some of the lounge pieces and just adding a few more workstations onto the end there. So we've tried to just really be conscious of the fact that, you know, right now you might have eight or 10, you know, help desk workers, but five years from now, it could be 12, it could be 20. So we want to make sure that we're really kind of future-proofing the building. So there's that 3D view of it. So lots of storage in the back, I know it seems like a lot, but I walked through where all your devices are stored and I was like being in Best Buy, so got to have enough storage back there. And then there's the whole like workroom in the back for repair. And like even some of those small group spaces could be utilized as more private offices down the line if in the future you needed more private offices. Restrooms, obviously, kind of covering all our bases. And then we have just a little video here. I want to point out the lights because I think they're so cool. We're going to do some fun, like semi, you know, nerdy kind of IT stuff. So that's like the binary code, the 1-0-1-0-0. We're going to kind of make some nods to tech and sci-fi and gaming, like we're going to do some fun things. So this is that kind of open cafe and kitchen, that's the training room, and then it's kind of moving into the open office workstations. We're going to have just some fun furniture pieces there. They've got field techs who would kind of come in and they don't necessarily need like their own desk, but they need a place where they could come in for an hour or two if they're in between schools, so they could touch down at one of the booths or one of the tall tables, and there's going to be lots of places for them to plug in. And then we again did the dot polling exercise with the IT team and had them kind of respond to imagery that they liked and they all kind of, you know, leaned towards this modern kind of Star Trek-y look. So we're excited, we're going to have some fun with all of that and we look forward to presenting future design updates. And I will hand it back to the Vice President and the Board for any questions or comments.
Well, I want to say that you did blow us away with the Early Childhood Center and I can only imagine what this is going to be, so thank you very much. With that, we might just get some comments from our Board colleagues. Mr. Stone?
Two questions. Considering the number of employees that will be there and if we have a meeting that can hold, then we want to have 150, 250 people, which I think is a really good space for us to have. I'm just curious if the parking is there for that amount of people? That's a yes?
Yes, yes. And especially, yeah, since now the district pretty much owns the, most of that side of the complex. Yeah, we're addressing parking, our landscape architects are ensuring there's plenty of accessible stalls and making some updates.
So the other question is, I don't drink coffee, so I don't notice is Starbucks still there? Is there one close by of a coffee shop of some kind?
Vivian and Annie are.
Okay, thanks.
Your coffee will be better than Starbucks though, so.
Well, competing with our patrons might be an issue.
I just have a quick question and maybe it's the picture, but given what I just heard in terms of how many people might be meeting there, I wasn't sure if the restroom stalls that were drawn in there is accurate. It looks like there's only 10 stalls. There's three toilets that are in the pit.
Yes, so we've actually gotten some feedback from Jeff and the rest of the team on the restroom situation. So initially, we were showing just all like kind of inclusive unisex restrooms. We think we're going to move back towards men's and women's restrooms and so we're kind of reworking that part of the plan right now. But we have our, one of our architects has been doing code studies to ensure that we have enough restrooms, not just for the times when there's just a few people scattered in there, but per code to make sure that we have enough restrooms for 200 people, you know, 250 people. So, so yeah, those are kind of being reworked right now, but we're definitely going to be planning for enough restrooms for that large crowd and not just kind of the day-to-day.
Hi, I don't really have any questions, I just have a whole bunch of I-loves. So I love the North Star concept, it's perfect. I love that it's an opportunity for different, the students of different high schools to get together and collaborate and I love the coffee idea, the, you know, the coffee, the cafe idea. I think it's really cool. I'm just seeing like, I Office out of PlexPod downtown and just that workspace concept, just the open workspace and kind of the WeWork PlexPod-type feel that it has, I think it's really just great and very relevant. And I love, love the idea of the mural in the courtyard. That courtyard has always been a very favorite spot of mine, even when I was a kid, I just thought it was such a cool spot. And so that is just, I'm just so happy that the courtyard's staying there and I'm very, very much happy about the mural idea. I think that's really great.
Yeah, we're excited about the courtyard and like the opportunity for it to kind of spill out from the coffee shop with some outdoor seating and some landscaping and like, it would be really great, like if you're doing those district events to just kind of activate that whole space and let people get their coffee, enjoy it outside, bring an ice cream truck, you know, all that kind of stuff. I think it'll be a really cool space and our landscape architect's working on that.
Oh, I just think there's so many opportunities for really great events, really great collaboration, and just to make this spot even better, which is saying a lot because it's so great right now, but it's very exciting. Thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
Any additional comments from the Board?
Again, thank you very much. And again, probably just my comments are, again, I can't wait to see it. And probably I just, our next item is going to be our Bond 41 update and probably not this evening, but in future presentations, we'll probably just ask for a timeline on this proposed project to also go in that so the Board can kind of follow the progress of the second component of the plaza. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Clemens?
For a point of reference, our Technology Department was utilizing the same space as they were probably for 15 years or so. And now that we have a one-to-one with all of our students, in addition, all of our teachers, most of our, most all of our employees have computers, we outgrew that space. And when this space becomes so affordable, it made sense for our School District, our Board of Education to consider additional space to give better customer service to our students and our staff as they go. So from what I understand, it'll be much like going to the Apple Store, the service will be right up front and people can get quick service, plus we have the space to store our assets during the summer when we reprogram them for our kids. And so I just want to kind of apologize to our Technology Staff that we've crunched them for space, geez, for several years now. I know that this has been much appreciated for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Evans, are you ready to go into Bond 41?
We are ready.
Okay, thank you. Following the agenda, we're at 6.04, Bond 41 update.
And just to circle back, Mr. Harrell, we'll be adding those as well. We'll finish up the design, we're finishing up those dying meetings right now, and then we will continue updating you both in the Friday memos as well as, you know, future Bond 41 presentations. So moving on forward with Bond 41, as you can see, overall budget, we just got done meeting with McCallum Gordon about a week ago for our update, and then we met with Matt and his team as well. We are tracking very nicely. As you can see, we're right under about 90 million spent of the original 155. We'll start seeing that peel back a little bit more or adding a little bit more when Staley comes online in mid-year. So right now, we're tracking very nicely. And with all the things that have gone on in the world, we're able to still, I feel able to produce with our original 155. And Matt says we don't get any more money, so that's kind of the goal. Early Education Center that was just mentioned, we're finishing up that project. We do feel like we'll get some back, not a lot, but we feel like that will actually come under that $24 million budget and we're finishing that project out right now. So we're excited to see that. Tonight, the Board in the consent agenda was awarded HTK, additional fees for this work on Winnetonka and Oak Park, excuse me, not this work, but a work next summer. As you recall, this is for the renovation, the additions at Winnetonka and at Oak Park starting, you know, last spring through the summer, and we're finishing up right now with the Oak Park renovation and the interior right now. But we will also come back next summer now and do some more work. And so that work includes restroom renovation, some systems upgrades, I know at Winnetonka. We have some interior work with Chad, with Dr. Sutton and his team and starting to, we were able to fit some of that painting and design into some pathway work at Oak Park. So we do have another set of things coming for Oak Park. And just like Maple Park and Antioch, we had to start a little bit earlier because when you talk about this amount of, you know, restrooms that we have to renovate, it's going to take some, it's going to take time. We will not be able to do that over the summer months, so we will work hard with administration, they're very aware of that and they're excited. We were able to do, if you recall, two bathrooms at each site, most of our public indoor restrooms that we have at each facility, and they've been very well-received. We will continue that through the spring and summer to update the entire facility. This daily additions coming along nicely. We do feel like the activities side will be open on the original schedule, which was at break, and be able to move in our students over break and our staff over break along with the, and then on the academic side, we still see that opening in February, kind of a phased approach like we did at North Kansas City, where we'll have it all ready to go and they'll move in as it time comes. So as you recall, we had some issues getting some permitting initially in this project, which put us behind, but we're able to do some catching up, but not enough to have it entirely open by January. So that is Staley High School. Davidson and Maplewood, you know now, are off and moving, so is the spending, as you can see. And we'll start seeing that go up and up and up as we get ready to open those buildings next fall in August of '22. One thing I'll point out to the Board, Chapel Hill was approved by the Board in the consent agenda tonight, the GMP. Chapel Hill is the last major project, I guess you could say, that will be in our original 155. There'll be another, a summer of work, I call it the Deferred Maintenance 1C Package, will be another GMP that we'll come to the Board with in December for consideration. But Chapel Hill is the last major renovation and addition and it's, you know, addition to some gym, renovation of the existing gym and some classroom spaces. But we know that that's something that, and actually, Jeff told me today that we're already permitted for Chapel Hill, a five-week process. So we're excited about getting to work on that. And with that, I'll give it over to Jeff.
All right. So I wanted to show a few pictures as we do every month. This is the one I'm most happy to show you. This is, the Gateway Gym is complete and open to students, it opened to students last week. If you recall, we had issues permitting and they had issues with roofing materials and it's finally open. They call this the Jumbo Gym over there, so that's kind of fun. Oops, wrong way. Staley, you see the athletic addition there on the left side. Here in the next month, we're going to see some wood floor go down in that gymnasium and it'll be ready for... see some wood floor go down in that gymnasium. And it'll, it'll be ready for us to move in just before, just before Christmas. And on the right, I just thought this was kind of a, a pretty view of the academic side. You see how, how close it's gonna be to Lake Marshawn there. And that, that's that, that classroom addition. And as, as Dr. Evans said, that'll be turned over to us in the spring. Maplewood, I, I feel like I'm showing a lot of gyms tonight, but the, the picture in the middle is, is Maplewood's gymnasium. The picture on the left I really like because that, that is some curb that's already poured out there. And before the weather turns, we'll get a base coat of asphalt on there. And so they'll actually have, they'll have a driveway out there here in, in just a few weeks. That picture on the right, I just wanted to point that out. You can't really see it, but that white beam up there, that's the beam that the students signed. And so this is where you would find it if you could see it. It'll be covered up. But that's in the administrative area there at Maplewood. And then Davidson, you guys may have seen a lot of pictures of Davidson on some social media this week. There's some really great pictures out there. All the, all the precast panels have now been set. And they're starting to set steel. They're supposed to start setting steel, I think tomorrow. Of course, it's supposed to rain for a few days, so that may impact that a little bit. But this one is finally starting to come along. And I wanted to show you, just sort of point out to you, the, the picture on the right. You can see, you can see the, the new Davidson there on the right side. You see the old Davidson back behind. Davidson is one of those schools that is really embedded into the neighborhood, more so than like Rising Hill or Northview or even more than like, probably even more so than Maplewood. It's really a part of that neighborhood. And this new school is gonna look, gonna be just completely different in, in style and everything. But we, we try to keep some of the colorations the same from the, the new school to the old school, just to give that neighborhood, you know, just a little bit of comfort, if you will, that as you drive by, you know, that's still Davidson in there. So I thought that was kind of cool. You can kind of see how that, how that translates there. So. And that's all I have for you this evening. So with that, I'll turn that back over to the Board with any questions you may have.
Fabulous presentation, both Dr. Evans and Mr. Vandal. Do we have any comments from our Board members?
Mr. Harrell, could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I, I might, I might put Matt on the spot a little bit. I heard Dr., Dr. Evans say that Chapel Hill was the last major project in this bond issue. I think that second phase of Prospect Plaza is, is that bond issue just with some premiums? Is that, is that right? Or I don't want to misinform the Board.
No, I think the plan is to use all of our available resources to get there. I think part of it's gonna be, I'd say most of it will be bond funds, but we may kick in some as well.
Thank you.
So, so what I think I'm hearing, again, just to reaffirm that, is we have the resources to continue on with Prospect North. Again, we've got lots of other issues that we're gonna deal with in our 10-year facility plan, but, but.
The next phase.
The, the next phase. But again, the basic components of what was presented tonight, we've secured the resources for.
Yes, sir.
That's fabulous.
And Mr. Harrell, I might have overspoke. The, that's the last major project of the original 155.
Right.
That we've been representing. So we'll, we'll still have, like Dr. Clemens said, we'll still have funds available. I just showed them the 155.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. And the reason I said, maybe we can incorporate the newest components of the, of the Prospect Plaza into the Bond 41 presentation, because then we'll have a complete project list from A to Z of everything that was covered under that bond issue. And certainly can share that with our community members. Thank you.
Again, any comments from the Board on, on the bond update?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. Next, we'll, on the agenda, we'll move to 6.05, Board Liaison Reports. Mrs. Kalkar, are you still with us here? I'm not seeing you from my angle, but I'm sure you're still with us.
I am.
Do you have anything that you'd like to update the Board on specifically about the Board Liaison Reports?
We've been preparing for the Board Member, or Board University that is going to be open to the public, those that may be interested in learning more about serving on a board committee and all. And that information is on our website for those that are interested in attending. I appreciate all the Board members who have volunteered to participate in that and for the planning.
Fabulous. Thank you. Any additional comments at this time? Dr. Board?
A couple of quick updates for the Board. Our Kansas City Liaison Committee is meeting next week. We haven't met last month, just because of schedules and we are intended bi-monthly anyway. I want to just publicly thank Dave Mecklenburg, who's been integral to that project. He was serving an extended term from the last mayor and this mayor has caught up on his appointments and has replaced Dave Mecklenburg on the Board. He's been a valuable partner and has helped us with our project at Hodge Garden on several other things. And I want to just publicly thank him for his support of the district. Also today, we hosted a meeting with the Dean of UMKT Schools of Computing and Engineering. They have just completed construction of a major new facility for research and experimentation and innovation. And we were exploring what there could be in the way of partnerships that we could work with them. He has stated one of his goals is to have those resources be public resources and to look for ways to work with the community. And we met with him today to talk about it and looking at what those resources could do to work with our career pathways, where our technology and engineering strands could be supported by collaboration, where it could support what we're doing with computing, looking for opportunities to partner with our students and with our teachers. First meeting, positive outcome. Let's meet again and see what else we can figure out. So I felt, feel very good about what that might hold as a way for us to push forward with both our career pathways, our STEM efforts, and extending what we're doing up at the NICS Center. So stay tuned for future updates as that continues to evolve.
Fantastic. Thank you. Doc, Mrs. Gleason?
I just wanted to make a comment on a, the Staley Choir Concert that I went to last week. It was amazing and it was beautiful. And it was so good to see those students be able to do what they love. It was the first choir concert since March of 2020. So to be able to see them do what they love was just so great and beautiful. And Tracy Rezegy is just such a major asset to this district. And it was great to see them do what they do. They performed a work from what they were supposed to have performed in Norway, which, you know, Norway didn't happen for those students. So it was just really great to see, to see those students doing what they love. And the audience was in tears and it was just pretty cool, very great.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mrs. Reinhardt?
Yeah, I will share. I was also on the Committee on the Board University Project. And I think that's gonna do a lot of good things for all of us. Really looking forward to the Missouri Board, State Board of Education Conference. What else will we call it? Committee, Group Meeting next week. And then also next week, some of our sixth graders are gonna be at the First Debate Kansas City, representing us. So that's kind of cool too. So, thank you.
Any additional comments?
Okay. Keeping with our agenda, we've got 7.01, Board of Education Meeting Calendar. There is a calendar attached to the packet tonight detailing the dates where the future Board meetings will be for the remainder of this school year. But again, the month of November will be busy. November 4th through 7th will be the MSBA Conference here in Kansas City. November 9th will be our next Board of Education Workshop. And November 22nd will be our next Board of Education Regular Meeting. With that, I think we've covered the agenda and make a suggestion that we adjourn the meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.